Okay, so I'd like to welcome everyone to Chamber Chat. And today, thank you. Today, we are with Tarrant County Commissioner Devin Allen. And just to kind of remind everybody, our Chamber Chats are really kind of about the journey of how you got to where you are today. So we know where you are.
Sure.
We want to know how you got here. And then we want your wisdom that you gained all along the way.
Oh, I'm supposed to have that?
Yeah, you're supposed to.
Yeah.
So I want to start with, first of all, where were you born and raised?
So I was born in Houston, Texas.
Okay.
But I was raised quite a number of places. So in Houston, also in Fort Worth Arlington area, I had family there. And also in Freeboro, Michigan, of all places.
Okay.
Lakewood and Denver, Colorado. So I moved around a lot as a kid.
Okay.
By the time I was 12 years old, I'd been to as many schools in three different states and four different states.
Okay, and tell me why?
Yes, well, so I was not a military.
That's what I was gonna ask him.
No, no, so mine was more just a family situation. And my mom and dad met at TCU. They fell in love, got married, started a family, and then things started not to go so well.
Ah.
So, and to be frank, my mom experienced domestic violence.
Oh, my.
And so she left. So she was a single mom of three kids with some college education.
Okay.
And this is a story that I tell off the side, don't you worry about me, I'll be okay. So she, you know, to try to make ends meet, she started writing what are called hot checks. Or they used to be called hot checks or check hiding. And it's a misdemeanor offense. And so she did that enough and she wasn't able to pay off the fines or to sit out in city jail. So a county judge, a criminal court judge at that time, decided to pull together her misdemeanor offenses and took felony. At that time, state law allowed that judge to do that. And so she was sentenced to 10 years in state prison.
Oh, my God.
For what amounted to $2,200 back then.
Wow.
So I have memories of visiting her in Huntsville.
Wow.
Forty-five for prison there. And so the really great thing though, because I mean, she, you know, made her mistakes. She repaired that society, she was a model person, so she didn't have to serve the entirety of that time, just three and a half years.
That's good.
But because of that, we moved around with family. We lived with family and friends, we kept talked all of that. And then once she was released from prison, she lived in a halfway house. And then, then here she was with a felony record, which made it really hard.
To get a job.
To get a job. And to get into, to find a place, this would have been in the late eighties, early nineties, that would rent to a single woman with kids and a felony record.
Okay, so I have lots of questions.
I figured.
So growing up, our, our city had two siblings?
Yes.
Okay. Younger, older?
So I'm the youngest.
Okay.
With the baby.
Yes, I am. Are you the typical baby?
No.
Okay. All right. So.
Wait, what do you, what do you think?
I have a baby sister, because I'm young, because I have a baby sister. And she was a baby, she was, you know, spoiled. By the time we got to, the parents got to them, they're like, oh.
Oh, yeah, okay. No, I mean, I think it was partially because of like, I had to grow up pretty fast. But then also, so there was 14-year age difference between me and my older sister. And then there's seven-year age difference between me and my oldest brother.
Oh.
So my brother was very much like a dad to me and my sister in so many ways. So, I mean, I'm sure that they would say in some typical ways that I was like the baby, the tattletale. Yes, I did a, I did a lot of that.
The tattletale.
Yeah, I did, yeah. But in some of the other ways, I really wasn't.
So, all right, that had to leave an impression on you.
Yes.
So first of all, just being, going from one place to another.
Yeah.
Tell me how that affected you.
You know, it gave me really a certain appreciation for home. And like a home that you, that is safe, that have running water, that had, you know, electricity, that you could leave your stuff in the next day or at the end of the school day, but you come back home and it's still there. You know? So I think that's one of the reasons why I'm so passionate about housing and housing affordability and homeless. Even for Tarrant County, 40% of people in our, in our county, 40% of our residents rent their housing. Let alone obviously people who own their own homes. But it's really important to have a home and for it to be as stable of an environment as possible. Because if you are consumed with, where am I going to lay my his hat? What am I going to eat? It's really hard for you to do anything else. I mean, people do it every day, but it's really, it's really hard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, all right, and then the impact of what, what your mother went through, how did that affect you?
It makes me extremely thankful for her. I mean, we had our own relationship issue that we had to work through, especially in a, for a certain time, I thought, well, even when I was younger, and then when I was in my teens, early twenties, you know, you think you know everything. You figure out you don't know anything, but you don't know very much. So there was definitely some healing that had to occur for us to have a good, solid relationship. And one that would, you know, lend itself to being where she had to overcome the shame of her mistakes. And also, you know, become a different person. I had to allow her to do that.
Yeah.
And I mean, we have a great relationship today, which I'm really thankful for.
That's, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah. So did you know during that period what you wanted to do? Or what happened when you got out of school?
Yeah. So growing up, I was always the kid that was, I was very quiet, like fiercely shy. My family to this day cannot believe the work that I do, the fact that I have to speak female like we're doing right now. Yeah, so I was a kid that was like hiding behind my mom or my grandmother, my grandfather, whatever. But I knew that I wanted to help people. And I was always curious in sciences and math, always did extremely well in school. So I was like, I want to be a doctor. And then I had an aunt who was a doctor. So then I saw that as an example. So in high school, this would have been in Denver, they had dual credit, similar to, you know, what we have with Mansfield ISD. And they had like a career tech type of school, like with Ben Harper. So I went to their medical training type thing, a half a day while I was in high school. And, and then after I graduated high school, I was in undergrad and I went to, at ETA, but I went to TCC to earn my training so that I could sit for my state national MBE, an EMT. And so I was an EMT for three and a half years.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely loved the work, loved the work.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, it's so interesting now, given, you know, the demands that first responders are under and critical healthcare workers are under. And the fact that every day that they're showing up to work, they are literally risking their lives. And they're doing that knowingly. I know what that feels like, even though of course there's no pandemic. But you are, you know, assuming a certain amount of risk when you show up to work every day. Like I had a needle stick, I had a TV exposure, I literally have had every bodily fluid thrown at me, you know? Because I mean, everyone who you help doesn't necessarily want to be healthier, they may not be a sound line. They may be under the influence. And your job is to, regardless, is to serve them to the best of your ability.
Yeah. Okay, so EMT.
Yes.
Then, then what came next?
Yeah, well, so I was at this kind of critical impasse in my, in undergrad where if I was really serious about medical school, then I needed to be like ready to take the MCAT and, you know, interviewing or prepare to apply to schools. And, you know, even though I did all the academic work, I just, I wasn't crazy about that idea. So I literally was like, I don't know what I'm doing. And so I, very long story short, I met, at that time, she was the mayor of the city of Fort Worth. And I said, well, I'm not sure what I want to do. She had a council lady who was going to, going back to school to get her masters. And someone had suggested that I apply for the job. And now I had no experience in public policy and government. I definitely, a track worker, it was like helping people, but I was in healthcare setting. So I applied for the job and then I got it. And that was in 2005. And I absolutely loved the work. I was definitely trial by fire, right? Even at that time, Tarrant County and Fort Worth was experiencing, you know, a huge amount of growth. Understanding the politics of everything was interesting. I got taught a lot mainly by community leaders. Who said, this is what's important to us, this is how we want to be treated, this is how serious you need to take this work. One of my favorite, I'm just gonna call her Ms. B, because I don't want to call her out like that. But one of my favorite residents that lived in Fort Worth, Ms. B. And she would call you in the morning, she'd ask for something. And then she'd call you maybe three hours later and be like, what's the latest on this? I'm like, Ms. B, I haven't even had time to work on it. And she'd call you in the afternoon and she'd say, we just talked three hours ago, what have you done? And, I mean, her expectations were a little unrealistic, but she stands out to me as someone who was very influential and powerful for her community. Because she saw the need, she communicated the need, and she expected something to be done about it. She didn't care who you were. She talked to the mayor the same way she talked to me, the same way she would talk to, you know, the guy in the street. She wanted something done for her neighborhood, she was gonna make it happen.
And?
Yeah.
So now, how long did you do that?
Twenty and a half years.
Okay, yeah. And then what, where did you go?
Yeah, and what's kind of typical for working in this space, especially when you work for a lot of, so she's worked for a total of three, is, you know, there are some people who work for it that really want to come better before. There are different positions and opportunities. So in total, I worked for the Texas Senate, I worked for the Texas House, and also the government relationships for the ETA. Yes, so that spanned over like a two-year period.
Wow.
Yeah.
And that was all prior to what you're doing now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So what did?
Behind the scenes, and I liked that way.
You did?
I did.
So, so what was probably, besides being behind the scene, what was the, your favorite? I mean, why do you love it?
The community?
Okay.
Yeah. The fact that you have the opportunity to get to know people and what they care about. That doesn't mean you're always going to be able to give them what they want or fix the issue. But you never know, you know, community meeting here and your seeds are planted and work's being done. Three, five, 10, 15 years later, I mean, I think that anything takes that long. But it all starts with a conversation and a relationship.
Right.
Yeah.
So in the role that you have now, what was the most surprising thing about it?
Oh, I mean, so many things. I mean, obviously, I follow the work that county government does prior to, prior to serving. I think probably what was, what is still so surprising is just how much that counties do. And obviously, we serve as administrative department of the state. And we do what state law or statute says we have to do. There's very little kind of extra things that we can do versus cities. Cities pretty much do what they want to do until the state says, no, you can't.
And it's interesting, a lot of people don't get that.
Yep.
And they want to blame people for that.
Yes.
Hey.
Right, yeah.
Talk to most people.
Yes, I ended up saying that a lot. I tried to actually not, not in such ways where I'm just passing the buck, but just to help people understand. If I could, I would, but for these reasons, I can't. But I'm gonna try to connect you if I can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what was it like going through a curve in your road?
Crazy.
Yeah.
Crazy. Hotness, crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, because I, I want to say, it was like maybe early mid-march that we put in the declaration.
Right.
And at that time, you're definitely just in emergency, like response mode. And no one really had any idea that now, 18 months later, we would still be dealing with it. And I remember, it took like maybe a whole second week after we put in our declaration, even though, I mean, it was just calls and meetings, it was just non-stop, you know? 15-hour days, just all trying to figure out what's going on, what are we gonna do, who needs what? But it took literally a solid week for me to say, okay, this is what it is until it isn't. And so this is how I'm gonna make sure that I'm serving my community. And one of the immediate things that we did was just to implement regular communications.
Yeah.
So, because there was so much to try to make sense of. And, you know, I say all the time, it's my job to be expert in county government so that you can feel good about your job of being an expert in running your business, taking care of your family, and, you know, just being human.
Yeah.
Trying to have a life. Yeah, but it was, it was very, obviously, none of us had ever experienced a pandemic before, or at least not to this scale, right? Others have, but not to this scale. And if you would have told me in, you know, January 1 of 2019, when I was sworn in, that during my first term in office, I'd be dealing with global pandemic, the Global Social Justice Movement, a 100-year storm, I would have said, yeah.
There's a lot, yes.
It's like, because, I mean, everybody kind of felt like, well, what's next? Okay, bring it. Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's a reason why people say like 2020 was a move. Because it, it was, and 2021?
Yes.
Apparently wasn't. Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, so I know that you said you're a reader, what are some of your favorite books?
Oh, I have so many. So I'm that kind of reader to where even if I read something like on a tablet or on my phone, if the book is really good and like I'm proud that I've read it, then I'll have to buy the paperback. You have to just sit there and I would never touch it.
Yeah.
So, so I love to kind of go back and forth. I'm always probably trying to read maybe four books at one time.
Okay.
Always a non-fiction, always a fiction, some kind of mystery. I like to read short stories. One of my favorites that I'm rereading for the fourth time now is The Turper Veracal, by John Wohle here. I love John Gershman's books.
Yeah.
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 And let's see, what's kind of a four? I love to cook, so I'm always reading something about food, maybe not necessarily about cook, but just trying to understand, take your culture, or why this food is like the food.
Yeah.
Or this meal, or this ingredient.
Interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Huh, so you do have some variety in there.
I do. I mean, I don't always have the kind of time that I would like to read, but at least I have something when I need a brain break from all the policy stuff and all the pandemic stuff that unfortunately we're all still dealing with. That at least I have something to go do, and I have to try to push myself to do that because I will work non-stop. My team will tell you, they have to stay, Devin, chill out. First of all, because they need a break, because they're people, and they've been working just as hard. But then I just, I love the work.
What else do you like to do to kind of unplug?
I love being outdoors. Right now, with the being triple-digit heat, it's a little prohibitive. But I love hiking, I love kayaking, I love just walking. I was a long-time runner, even in, when I was younger, I ran track, I was a sprinter. So I love to run. I haven't been doing much recently, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And did you, I think you said you just recently tried to grow up a bit, actually?
I did.
Did you go someplace fun?
I went to Puerto Vallarta.
Ah.
I did. I did, and you know, I, it took me a really long time to feel okay doing it, and want to take time off.
Yeah.
This is probably the first time I've taken any kind of time off in almost three years.
Yeah.
And then even to travel internationally. And, you know, but I had to also just come to the realization, one, I had a whole bunch of personal life that has happened over the last two years, two, three years, like everyone has.
Yeah.
I'd say, you know, I, I need to get away.
You gotta have balance in your life.
Yeah, I'm still learning that part.
Yeah, so I can say that, but do I do it?
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, it's really easy to see in someone else.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so that was a big deal for me. It was nice to, to get away. Really, my goal in going was to, to go surf, I love to surf. And I hadn't been able to do that for about a year, because I had a big recovery from major surgery that I had had during the stomach. But I wasn't able to surf, which is, which is fine. But the reason why was because they had like a red alert, apparently there were crocodiles in the water. And I said, hey, we're, the ocean is your space, apparently.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna let you have your space.
Yeah.
And we just find a pool.
Yeah. So is there anybody that you would love to have lunch with, dead or alive, that you just would love to have a conversation with?
Oh, wow. There's actually quite a few people. But the person who is very top of mind right now is President Bush.
Okay.
Son. I would like to talk to him about what it was like to serve during 9/11.
Oh, yeah.
I think obviously that time is coming up, but then that was even before I was a, a first responder. And, you know, at that time, that was one of the worst things.
Yeah.
That's what could happen in our country.
Yeah.
And not at all comparing traumas, atrocities, none of that, it's not my place to do it. You think of everything that our country has gone through with the pandemic. And I'm sure that he has some, some hindsight, you know? To, as a leader, obviously not to the scale of serving as president, but what did he learn about himself? What did he learn about his leadership? What did he learn about the country? That he would want to, you know, that he could impart to me or impart to others?
Yeah.
Because leading is very hard, which a lot of us leave, whether you're kind of elected office, whether you're, you know, leading your family, your business, or your own life.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because that's literally a whole job.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd want to talk to him.
Yeah, that would be interesting, that'd be a real interesting conversation. I remember seeing, when they went and told him, he was speaking at a elementary school. And you saw someone from the Secret Service come over and whisper in his ear what had just happened.
Yeah.
And that was interesting, because he maintained his composure, but you could tell this.
Yeah.
See, can think about that.
Yeah. Well, and I was out at Texas YC, I met a few years ago at the Presidential Library in Dallas. And he did a surprise visit, just came to say hi to everyone. And I was like, this close to him, and I was like, I really want to go say hi. But, you know, these Secret Service guys, I probably shouldn't. But, so I love presidential history. Any, any presidents, all presidents, there's something to learn from everyone in the United States or successes. So one of my favorite books that I would recommend, especially if you're into presidential history or politics or anything like that, is Things Called The Gatekeepers. And the book is focused on the chief of staffs for the president.
Ah.
And really, the author kind of meets together how, who your executive leadership is, really says a lot about you. Which, but then also, most of the time, it's the leader that gets the attention and not some of the people who make so much out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Another, on that, here's a book for you.
Okay.
The Founding Fathers on Leadership.
Yeah.
And that's real interesting, just to see how, what their take was on everything and how they, how they did. But I'm like you, I like to read about stuff like that, I find that fascinating. Okay. All right, so we've learned a little bit about this and that and the other.
Okay.
Let me just kind of ask you, looking into the future, what do you feel is a, whether for, for you in your role or just, you know, the county or the state or the country, what do you feel is the forefront, the largest challenge that we have coming ahead of us?
For Tarrant County, for Richard Barre State, it's just the exponential population growth.
Yes.
And so how do you respond to that? The demand for infrastructure? And then, you know, beyond that, is how do you create and in other ways maintain a community that is ready to live within and respond to the diverse needs? Tarrant County is one of the most diverse counties. In precinct two specifically, right? Where we are right now is one of the most diverse precincts in the state.
Hmm, in the state?
Yeah. And it's just across the board, across all demographics, it's diverse. And so that means you have to stay nimble, right? It's no different than with a business, understanding your customers, your clients, and what their needs are. And there can be some, you know, solid, this is what we provide, we're not gonna make these changes. But in other ways, if you want to stay relevant, and if you want to stay successful, you're gonna have to make changes.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah.
And by human nature, people don't want to do that.
No, they don't.
I mean, they said they do, we want to. No, I don't want to do that.
Right, right, to be held, not to.
That's right.
Yeah.
So you think infrastructure and growth, because aren't we, isn't it, and maybe it's a DFW area, but I thought I heard a term, I heard 8 million. Where's that?
Oh, I haven't heard that number. I mean, the last from this honestly probably would have been, excuse me, maybe within the last year, is we get 1,000 new Texans every day, we're naturals and people who, every day. And we were, I think we're projected to reach 40 million in our state by, maybe it's 2040.
Yeah, right.
So we're just under 30 million now.
Yeah.
That's a lot of people, really.
It is a lot of people. And I think it was the Dallas-Fort Worth area that was the projected, where it was 8 million. And I can't remember what the timeline was on it, but that was, so it's like, it's common.
Yeah.
Everywhere.
Yeah, and we're expecting any, any day now to get more information, official results on the census, on 2020 census, which of course, you know, we would anticipate having fairly significant undercount just because of COVID and then all the changes, you know, around the census and the date and just access and everything like that. But yeah, so I'm really curious to see what that number is gonna be. I mean, we already just based off of the initial, they didn't know that Texas is gonna gain two congressional seats because of that growth. But what does that look like specifically for Tarrant County, for Precinct Two? I'm a data nerd, so I want to see the data.
You want to see the data. So what are the plans? I mean, what are, what are some of the planning that's going on to handle that type of gap growth?
Yeah, I think multiple things. One of the things that is really relevant and that is coming up for Tarrant County voters to consider is a, is a bond election, a proposed bond election for transportation. And this is specifically roads, kind of traditional road projects. So like City and Mansfield, for instance, submitted projects for consideration for that bond. Ultimately, it's up to the voters to say whether or not that they want to support that. The last time we had a, a bond of that type would have been in 2006. So that car proceeded my time on the court. But, you know, some pretty substantial things were able to be done because of that. It's a no tax rig increase bond. One of the things that I'm really proud that I worked to, to make sure that we had in our policy was pedestrian-type capabilities.
Right.
Maybe not standalone, but if it's associated with a road improvement, associated with road improvements, which is important, because, you know, we don't have, you know, mass transit and, you know, so you're in far southeast Tarrant County, getting the far northwest Tarrant County, gets a job or whatever. That's not an option for you. And I get that not everybody wants that, but also not everyone has a car. So we need to be thinking about if, I can choose to use their, right, to use their two feet or wheelchair or a Vespa or a bike, they need to make, you know, I want to make sure that people have options. Now, and that's not gonna be what every community wants, but there are some communities in.
Where it makes sense, too.
Yeah, that one, yeah.
Yeah. Well, and I'll do a shameless, shameless plug, because we're gonna do.
That's your job.
We're gonna do a conversation in October with the set organization that we're both involved in.
Yeah.
Yeah, about. Yeah, about, and we're gonna, you know, a little whistle and bell here, we might have, we might have some futuristic stuff to show and talk about. Um, because you can only put in so much, so many roads and then you can't.
Yeah.
And so you have to start looking at other ways to move people.
So move people.
Yeah, and so you kind of have to go, huh, I wonder where all the other spaces where we could move people.
Right, yes.
So it's gonna be up here somewhere.
Yes, well, I mean, if you look at other parts of the world, it's been done, there are certainly models for it. Now, I think one of the, the biggest, um, issues, uh, is some of, um, the infrastructure is, is, um, very costly. So you're trying to think of how can you serve the most people in a way that is affordable and that's sustainable.
Right.
I'm definitely biased to public transportation because running Houston and Denver, I mean, I got to school that way, I got to the doctor that way. Anywhere we needed to go, that's how I definitely, didn't have a car, we walked or we got on the bus or the bike route.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah.
Interesting, interesting times we live in.
Yes, there's no shortage of issues, there are problems, there are things.
Interesting.
Are solved.
But that's good, in, in some ways, I mean, that's growth, right? I mean, if you didn't have anything, that would signify another problem.
Well, and just earlier this week, we were in a, in a somewhat of a, of a, uh, educational type meeting with some other folks that, you know? Lead different organizations throughout the county. And Robert Capron of the Fed was, um, kind of helping us work through some issues.
Uh huh.
And he had talked about how, yes, we are having this explosive growth, but he probably rather have that problem than some other parts of the country. That, um, where, right, you're seeing all of your, you know, intellectual capital in your tax base. And so if, if there was one situation or the other, I'd rather be in the situation that we're in, not that it's not, not that it hasn't already presented major challenges and it will continue to do so.
Right.
But, um, that also to your point, gives us great opportunities.
Yes, it does, it does.
And we have to be thankful for it.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I appreciate you taking time to come visit with us.
Thank you for having me too.
And, yeah, and, um, we're gonna end the Facebook Live portion at this.
By Facebook?
Yeah, by Facebook.